That's okay. I've been in business. Business is the same as running a business. I've been in business and there are some sitting commissioners that have never had a job for more than a couple of months. They just have a lot of good decrees, but have not put them to use. So I don't want to um. I don't want to use it as a guinea pig. I want to just run it like a business, a not-for-profit business. It should not be a for-profit business, for heaven's sake.
Welcome to the Janelle King Show. I am Janelle King. This is Extra 106.3 and this is where we discuss kitchen table topics that are typically banned from family gatherings, where absolutely necessary for a strong republic. And today, we're going to continue our candidate conversation series with Ms. Kay Morgan, who we've spoken with in the past. However, we're going to do a second, a second interview as we're getting closer to Election Day. So as Election Day draws much, much closer to us, we're going to welcome Kay back to the show. She is running for Cobb County Commissioner Chair against Lisa Cupid, who is current, the current Cobb County Commissioner Chair. And in the second interview, we're going to do a bit of an update on her campaign, um, some of the issues that matter to Cobb County. We want to touch on that again because that's what I took from our first interview is just how well-versed Kay was on those top, those topics. But just a little bit of a recap, uh, Kay is a lifelong advocate for her community. She continues to focus on bringing real change to the county that she loves, which is Cobb County. She has a deep involvement with local organizations, an extensive professional background, as well as have dedicated service and dedicate her life to service. So in our previous conversation, which I will put the link to that interview in the description box for those who are watching on YouTube, um, we learned a lot about her campaign strategy, about her focus, um, and how she plans to approach, uh, her campaign. But now that we're in the final stretch, we are a couple of days out, a couple of weeks actually, out from Election Day. Um, we've decided to bring Kay back to the show because we want to get an update on where things are going. And I know since um, our last interview, she has obtained two pretty big endorsements, uh, endorsed by our governor, Governor Brian Kemp, as well as our former Senator, Senator Kelly Luthler. So let's just start right first, welcoming to the show. Welcome back to the show, Kay.
Thank you. Glad to be back. Thanks for the invite.
Absolutely. And thank you, thank you, thank you for, uh, joining. And I'm so excited to hear what's been going on. So let's update us. How's it been on the trail? And what, what have you heard or what have you been saying that has resonated with voters?
What's really resonating with voters right now seems to be my message of unity. Uh, the current commission, just, there's a lot of infighting and there's a lot of, uh, just dissension. And it's not pretty to watch. If you go to YouTube, you can see all the meetings, you can see them, um, saying they're threatened by the public when they're during public comment and having people removed from the speaking podium. I just find that to be, uh, very, very troubling that we have commissioned leaders, basically leaders in our county that, uh, won't tolerate listening to the public when it's a criticism. I think key to any sort of republic, because you need to hear the good, you need to hear the bad, and then you need to come together somewhere in the middle. So that's, that's really resonating with voters right now.
Okay. So when it comes to, uh, some of the topics that are, um, some of the policy topics, um, do you feel like there's one particular topic that's standing out right now? Um, or, or do you feel like the, uh, message of unity and just wanting to have leaders who act like leaders seems to be the, the primary focus?
Actually, there's two really pressing topics right now. The first, I think, we, we did discuss the first before. That was called the M-Slots, the Mobility Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax. Uh, adding 1% to everything that we buy, everything, um, including diapers, formula, food, whatever, uh, for 30 years. 30 years to collect $11 billion of our tax money. That adds up to about $500 a person per year. And let me tell you, if you're a single mom already struggling, that's a lot of money. It sounds, yeah, penny, big deal penny. No, it adds up. Some people are one car repair away from losing their job and not being able to get to work. It does add up. And frankly, I don't want to saddle my grandson born this year for 30 years with a tax. That's just not something. The other pressing topic, which has actually just been brought back up, um, the current chair had brought it up in 2021 and it was not popular. So it got dropped. But again, it's, uh, accessory dwelling units. Basically, think a tea shed or an in-law suite in your backyard, uh, your house. Sounds great. It could possibly help with affordable housing, but they're going to be allowed in every single zoning code in Cobb County, every residential zoning code. So I can just foresee these popping up in everybody's backyard and who's going to police if it becomes an Airbnb? Who's going to police if it actually is your in-laws or grandparents living there? Because you can have up to three unrelated adults and six children and five cars outside of your garage will now be allowed. Yes, it's a really bad idea. I understand that it appears to address affordable housing. Well, this is, this isn't the solution, not on this widespread of a base they're proposing and basically trying to kind of slide it in under the radar. It will completely change the face of our neighborhoods completely. We're going to have streets blocked with cars, creating a danger for children going on and off a school bus.
I'm, I'm gonna, I mean, this may be a bit of a stretch, but it just popped in my mind. Um, is this a way of trying to address our migrant issue, you think, um, as well? I mean, is it possible that, um, this is creating additional housing? Or do you feel like it's mostly because of the affordable housing argument?
I think it could be both, honestly, because right now in Cobb County, uh, the Sheriff's Department does not enforce ICE. They do not, um, if they have a criminal that they arrest on a criminal charge and they find them to be here without papers undocumented, they do not turn them over to Immigration Services. So yes, we used to, the former sheriff did cooperate with ICE on a regular basis, keeping criminals off of our streets. Uh, so I think the current mood of this county is, you know, come one, come all, where basically we've become a sanctuary county now. And that does create danger that creates in our neighborhoods. So this, um, ADU proposal, having that many people live in a residential area, let me think about it. Builders have to abide by building codes. They're only allowed so much density. If they want to go against what's on the zoning map and have further density, they have to go through a huge, long process with the zoning planning board, and then they have to come before the county commission for approval. Well, they're there in place for a reason. It's to keep the feel and the ambiance and just our neighborhoods, keep them suburban. We live suburbia. We chose to live in suburbia. I've lived downtown in the city before, loved it for a time in my life. It was perfect. Then I wanted to raise my kids and slow down a bit, take a step back, have a little more room around me. So we moved to the suburbs. I would like to look at the suburbs. They have their place. Cities have their place. Suburbs have their place. And I want to preserve that for Cobb County.
I think it's interesting you're saying that because that's a very valid argument, you know? Um, there are people who choose to live in highly populated, more dense areas because that's the type of lifestyle that they wish to live in. And there are people like you and myself that chose to live outside of that, um, type of environment, um, because we, we want a little bit more space, some yards and, you know, a different type of connection in the neighborhoods. Um, and then you can go even further with rules. So it's important to note that that is a perspective that many share. And if you change the suburban life or the suburban environment to a more highly dense environment now, it's becoming more of a, um, urban, um, environment. And I know that word sometimes gets misconstrued, but technically that's what it's called. So, um, I, I do see the, the danger in that.
Yes, yes. I mean, we need choices.
Absolutely. You gotta have options, right?
Right, right, right.
Now, I know the district is predominantly Democrat, but I know there are some swing voters and independent voters and moderate voters there. Um, have you spoken to any of them? And if so, what are they saying?
Uh, they are pretty much agreeing with me. They want to keep, uh, Cobb suburban. They want to protect office air force face. Uh, they also don't like their lack of trust in government. Many have expressed that it needs to be run more like a business. And I'm a business person. And I strongly believe that government is just big business. It's just another business to run. You've got payroll, you've got budgets, you've got deadlines. It's just a business. While I ran a business for 25 years, I know how to run a business. We ran a very successful business. And, um, I want to bring that to the county. I want to bring back trust. And I want to be, bring back a strong business background. I was also a banker for 10 years. So I've been steeped in finance and business my entire career. And I want to bring all that to bear on this current, on the commission.
So when it comes to, um, the economics, it seems like the economic conversation has definitely been driving things. And it seems like people are really concerned about the, the state of the econ, of the county from an economic perspective. But what about social issues? Have you had to talk about any social issues like, uh, like the big, the hot button topic right now on elections is abortion? Um, is there anything that, has that come up, uh, running on a county level?
No, it actually hasn't. Um, I've had a few people ask me how I feel and I'll express my personal opinion. I say that that does not affect legislation at all. I have absolutely no, no, no control over that at all. I just have my personal, you know, beliefs and opinions on that. Um, and I believe everyone else should follow their own conscience with it. That's something that I believe is too personal to be legislated, honestly.
I agree. What about, uh, public safety? And has there been a conversation around gun control or anything like that as it relates to public safety?
Well, as far as public safety, that's always going to be the case. There's always going to be conversations. Every time there's another school shooting, they continue to want to take our guns away. Um, I'm a firm believer in the U.S. Constitution, how it's written, it's abiding by it. So I am a huge proponent of everyone being, having the right to own a gun. Absolutely. Um, we should all be allowed to own guns or preseason. That's what happens in Cuba, Nicaragua, that's Venezuela. Once you disarm the public, you're at risk of becoming no longer a republic. So I firmly believe the constitution was written with a lot, a lot of wisdom and I abide by it. Now, one hot button topic right now, especially in Cobb County, is, well, they like to say it's a book banning. Our county schools have removed certain books from the shelves in the schools. I read the books. I was blushing. You cannot read them out loud at a school board meeting because they're considered inappropriate. The language is that foul and the, so the subject content is not appropriate for elementary school children. Now, they like to call it book banning. It is just removing it from the shelves at the school. You can go out and buy it. Should you choose to read these books through your?
Thank you so much for joining the show. Please remember to like, share, comment, and subscribe. And don't forget to hit that notification bell. So you'll be notified every time I upload new content. Now back to the discussion.
Children, you go right ahead. Let's let parents parent and teachers teach, but we don't need teachers parenting. These books do not belong in our schools. The, the material is not appropriate for certain ages and go out and buy it. It's not banned. That's a misnomer completely, but it's a huge controversy right now in Cobb County. Huge.
Now, but now, uh, as a commissioner, um, and not being on the school board, where does this intersect? Like, how is that intersecting with what y'all are doing or what you would be doing, um, outside of the school board?
I think outside, you're correct. That is their purview completely. But I think that being, um, having a public voice, having a platform to speak from, I think that I could be a good influence and, and bring that conversation forward that yes, they are removed from the schools, but they're not banned. And that's the message we need to get across. They are not banned. So.
Now, um, let's talk about, um, income and just, you know, the wealth, so to speak, wealth gap. Um, there's particularly in large counties, you have, uh, it's, it's almost like it's split, right? You have like one half of the county is where most of the, the finances are coming from, most of the tax dollars are coming from. And then you have another half of the county, which feels like it's kind of where you're spending a lot of those tax dollars. Uh, do you have a way in which we can bridge that gap and, uh, to make it where those who haven't really been paying into the system can now participate? And then those who have been paying into the system can see, um, some additional benefits of what they've been doing versus kind of spreading their small portion throughout the entire county?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And that's, that's pretty typical across the country where you have one set, um, shouldering the burden of the rest of the population. And that's pretty typical. And the way to get around that, in my opinion, is to create opportunities in those places where there are those income gaps. There are not a lot of opportunities down in certain parts of the county. Uh, we have food deserts. We have banking deserts. There's a, a mobile bank will open on a Saturday. That's it. And then they're closed. Uh, there's places where you can't go to a grocery store conveniently. Um, even the Waffle Houses are starting to close and we know those spring up everywhere. We need to create opportunities. Uh, a, a good way to start is by creating job training. Most people want to work. It's just they may not have the skills necessary to even know how to find a job, much less keep a job. Uh, there's a workforce, uh, Cobb has opened up and they're providing a lot of great resources, education, um, job training, putting people together with companies, internships, that sort of thing. Uh, and I, I love the way that the schools are finally going back to teaching trades. We need more. I know, um, there's ways to bring things to the kids in the schools, have them hands-on. Uh, for instance, bringing welders, bringing car mechanics, bringing plumbers. All of these are very lucrative professions. But the kids don't think of going into them because all they hear is college, 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 college. College isn't always the path to wealth. Sometimes it's these trades. And I want to really, really encourage pushing that in a lot of the schools where there aren't as many opportunities for the kids to go to college.
Do you feel like there are any topics or any issues where, um, you see, uh, opportunity to work across the aisle? You know, or you feel like, yeah, this is a subject that traditionally as a conservative, we haven't really touched on, but I have some ideas and I think I can work across the aisle with.
Right, right. Well, I think the affordable housing is going to have to be across the aisle. It is one tough nut to crack. It's going to be, I mean, no one's come up with a solution yet. There are several ideas being floated around and I want to hear them all. And this is definitely going to have to be at reach across the aisle, I think, because you can't just make it happen overnight. Builders aren't going to build if they're not going to make money, period. And I would love to find a way, public-private partnerships to at least get our first responders able to afford a home in Cobb County. I can't stand going out of county and seeing a sheriff's car or a police car parked in a driveway out in Paulding or Cherokee that has Cobb County all over it. Um, and I think that there are solutions. They're not going to be easy and they're not going to be cheap, but there are solutions out there. If we just could all put our collective heads together, there's so much knowledge and so much brain power out there. If we would just sit down and listen to each other and not go, I'm right, you're wrong, I'm right, you're wrong. Um, we need to start voting on policy. Stop voting on anything but policy.
I totally agree. I totally agree. Um, are you opposed to the tiny house or container house, um, strategy? Um, like I know, I remember a long time ago, the tiny house community, it just popped in my mind when you were talking about affordable housing. That was such a big thing. And I don't know if that's still being talked about, but I think it is. I know, um, Mayor Dickens, uh, created a container community for, I think, the homeless. But yeah, how do you feel about that?
Well, the problem with that is they're not, you're not going to really own them from, from Mayor Dickens' point. These are just temporary housing. They're considered temporary housing. Temporary houses is great. And tiny houses create problems of their own. Uh, as far as density and the drain on the resources of the schools. Um, however, I have seen this work. I have seen cottage villages come up. Smaller homes, 950 square feet, you own them, they have nice little plot, nice little lots, and that is perfect. Say for the first time home buyer or for a retiree, these are perfect little villages. Um, but the problem there is again, you've got to watch the density because of schools. You can't just flood a school all of a sudden. But homeowners do invest more typically into their county because they want their home values to stay up. So investing in your neighborhood and community is very, very important, top of the list of homeowner. So I do want to encourage home ownership versus the rental. Rental houses place, 100%. We need rentals. But to encourage rentals as a option for affordable housing, I think it's going down the wrong road. We're not letting people create generational wealth that way. We're just making the landlord rich.
Mm-hmm. Now, in Cobb County, um, do you see, are there more people who live in apartment complexes rather than owning their own home? And the reason why I ask that is because in apartments, you know, they're very transient and, uh, you know, you, you can knock on their door for this election and they'll have their vote. And the next election, it's another person living there and it's just very transient. So, um, what's the ratio in Cobb?
You know, that is a great question, Janelle. I do not know. I suspect that there are more homeowners here. But right now, as far as rental as a whole, we are one of the most dense, um, municipalities in Atlanta, metro Atlanta of, uh, corporate-owned rental housing. And these are, you know, actually houses, single-family houses. So we have a great deal of investor-owned homes. And again, that is only making the landlord or the large corporation money and not creating generational wealth. I, I'd like to look into somehow limiting how many homes in a neighborhood can be rented. I know in Woodstock, people were so excited. They were building this fabulous new neighborhood just outside the downtown. They were very excited about it. Come to find out, every single house in there were built as rentals. A corporation built them all and they're renting them all. So I would like to see something like that shut down, honestly. We need to, again, encourage home ownership. Use some of these grant programs that are out there, the Dream, DACA, all these programs. Um, there are programs out there. People just don't know about them. They don't know how to apply. They don't know where to go. There's great loans for first responders and, um, nursing, nurses and doctors. There's some really good loans out there. And certainly the VA loan should be more widely encouraged. So.
I, I, I totally agree with you. Um, it's funny, I'm taking notes while you're talking because there's, these are different topics that I think are really, really good. Um, again, I, you know, I, what I love about our conversations is that you do have a plan. You can go deeper than just talking high level, right? It's different from saying, it's one thing to say, we need to attack, you know, the affordable housing issue. It's another thing to say, you know what, these cottage communities is something we should look at, or, you know, stopping the corporations that are buying up these homes. And you know how real that is? I, um, I remember, um, going to a courthouse sale because, you know, when you wanted, I was considering flipping a house and there was a court, you know, the courthouse step auction. And a lot of times, these are people's homes where they've owned the homes, but they either not paid their taxes. And so now it's being taken from them. And we're talking about like one lady, I believe she owed like $1,700 to keep her house. That was it. And I remember her coming with her $1,700. And then I remember the auction started and the corporate guy beside her, um, not literally, but in, in the room, he bid, his bid was started at like 20,000.
Right.
There's no way her 1,700 can compete to with this, right? And I am all for capitalism for, by, by all means. I know you are as well.
Absolutely.
There, there's a way to do it where you're, no, where you're not disenfranchising people. And so that, that's something I do think that needs to be talked about.
I agree totally. Yeah. Uh, Georgia has, that's, that's a really, uh, interesting way that Georgia does foreclosure. And it can be foreclosure of any type, taxing's probably being one of the biggest ones, also if you're behind on your mortgage, to sell it on the courthouse steps to the highest bidder. It's a very, uh, kind of old west sort of system to me. Uh, and I feel bad for such the little old lady. She probably didn't have the resources to figure out how to go in and stop that. And once a foreclosure gets on a roll, they're hard to stop. Um, they say banks will work with you, but you'll, you'll hear one thing from the bank and another thing from the other banker and then another thing. They tell you, oh, do this, it'll be fine. Next thing you know, you're on the courthouse steps trying to buy your own home back. Um, yeah.
It is so demoralizing. It's so demoralizing. Um, so let, but let's, let's, let's kind of stay in this same vein. Um, property taxes are, have you had any conversations about that? Because I know property taxes have gone up a great deal.
Oh, I've had a lot of conversations about the property taxes. People ask me all the time, what are you going to do? Well, during the last four years, your property taxes in Cobb have gone up 33%. I don't know about you. I haven't had a 33% raise in my job. I don't think a lot of people have over the last four years. That's a lot. And it all has to do with property values. It's all based on current appraised values. Um, and of course, what's happened? They've soared. It's so, this good old supply and demand, which it, what, it's what makes capitalism go around, supply and demand. There's a very low supply right now because all those 2% mortgages have people stuck in their homes. They don't want to give them up. Builders aren't building because they keep waving that recession flag. Uh, so it's just, it's slowed down right now. There just isn't the inventory. So prices have gotten bid up. Um, to just absolute astronomical levels. That doesn't mean that you can't roll back the millage rate to account for some of the increased tax revenues. You don't have to take it all. Just because it's there for you to take doesn't mean you have to dip your hand in that pocket. You can roll back the millage rate, which has historically been done by the commission to balance out, a little even out, not always, um, negate it, but even it out so that you're not getting hit with that huge tax burden. Yeah. I mean, this year I opened my tax bill and my mouth dropped to the floor. I'm like, oh my. I hope I had my homestead and senior exemption. Otherwise, I don't know where I'd get the money from. It's just, and just the current level of taxing, it just, it's mind-boggling. They've introduced another tax, the stormwater tax, where they want to tax rain falling from the sky onto your property. Um, when we're already paying a water bill that has profit built into it for them to then drain back off into the county coffers. So let's not talk about a new tax until you stop taking my money from the water department that I'm paying for a service.
You know, so we may have talked about this in the previous interview, but for the sake of the conversation, um, for those who are listening who may not understand what millage rate means or what do you mean by that? Because I think a lot of voters are just, uh, ignorant to how the, the government works. So can you explain the millage rate, what that is?
Yes. What it is, is you get a price value for your home and then they apply what's called the millage rate, which is just a percentage. It's pure and simple. It's a percentage of your, uh, value, home value that you pay in as counting taxes. Now, keep in mind, the majority of your taxes is the school board. Now, I don't mind paying school board taxes. That educates our children. I mean, I'll admit, I am of an age where I get to not pay them anymore, but I did pay them for many, many, many years. Um, so it's just a percentage, some, pure and simple, a percentage applied to the value of your home. So that percentage can go up, it can go down, or it can stay the same.
And the county commissioners are the ones who determine what that is.
They set the millage rate for county taxes. That's correct.
And so basically, if, um, you have, if let's say, you know, you want to build something in the, in the community or in the county, then the county commission can say, well, we're going to raise your millage rate. So now you're, when you go to pay your taxes on your home, that there's going to be an increase because, you know, that portion that they raised is going to go towards building that, that dock, that, that, that new building or whatever. But people don't have a say, right?
They do not, except for public comment. You can come to the commission meeting and you can protest, which was done quite a bit and quite loudly during all the, um, meetings discussing the budget and the millage rate. Um, but to no avail. It was as usual, the same majority voted for it and the same minority voted against it. So.
And so when you say the majority and the minority, um, is it safe to say, and this is me, not you, that the majority of the board that supported it were supporters of Lisa Cupid? Um, and then the others are typically those who oppose, um, some of her actions?
Correct, correct. Um, there, there are two that are very conservative fiscally. And those are the ones that get voted down all the time. Um, they're very conservative. They don't want to spend county money on outside consultants and frivolous things. They want to put the money back in the citizens' pockets, a lot like Governor Kemp is doing.
So basically, if voters vote for you, they can probably see that there's going to be an increase in the amount of money that they get to keep in their pockets rather than give to the county, just simply because you are more fiscally conservative.
Correct. That is my goal. That is my number one aim and goal is to keep more money in citizens' pockets. They need it and they can spend it. And by them spending it, then it creates more wealth. Because as they spend at local businesses, local businesses can then expand, hire more workers and on and on and on. So by letting everyday Joe keep the money in his pocket to spend on his own at his discretion, you're actually benefiting the economy as a whole.
Yeah. So since you've been on the trail, I would like to know, um, what misconceptions have you heard? Like, what are your opponents saying about you or opposition in general that you've heard that you feel like you have to clear up? Because, you know, it's just completely, um, political rhetoric.
Right. Um, I hear a lot that I've never been a sitting commissioner. I've never been a politician. I've never been in politics. Well, that's okay. I've been in business. Business is the same as running a business. I've been in business and there are some sitting commissioners that have never had a job for more than a couple of months. They just have a lot of good decrees, but have not put them to use. So I don't want to. So I don't want to, um, I don't want to use it as a guinea pig. I want to just run it like a business, a not-for-profit business. It should not be a for-profit business, for heaven's sakes. We need to squeeze every dollar, every dime out of our resources that we have currently.
Yeah, absolutely. You know what? Whenever I hear the argument that the person running has not had any political experience, meaning they've never held elected office, my next thought is always, why would you want somebody who's been a career politician? Why would you want somebody who has lived off of tax dollars for most of their lives? Or someone who thinks that that's okay. Um, when you, when you position people in leadership and they don't have a career to go back to or a job or just anything that can sustain them outside of the position they're holding, you're positioning them and, uh, to, to commit some type of fraud at some point.
Very likely.
I mean, it's very likely that they're going to try to maintain their livelihood, which, which would mean maintaining that seat, which would mean doing whatever it takes to win. So put yourself in a very tight situation. So I just want viewers that are watching and listening to know that it's not cute. That's not cute. And that's not cool. You do not want people who think it's okay to be in a representative seat for their entire career. That's not, for years and years. That's not, that's not good.
Yeah. We've seen way too many of them and we've seen the disastrous results. We, we see the effect on our economy of someone in office who has never done anything but be in.
Thank you so much for joining the show. Please remember to like, share, comment and subscribe. And don't forget to hit that notification bell. So you'll be notified every time I upload new content. Now back to the discussion.
Office, um, pumping money into the economy to create a huge recession, uh, raise our taxes. All these unwise news, very unwise news. Career politicians, again, they're trying to protect their career. Uh, I'm not. I, I have a career. I'm, I'm about ready to retire, mate. Frankly, I could. Uh, but so I'm in it, I'm not in it to go anywhere else either. This is as high as I aspire. To there, do some hard work, um, probably get kicked in the teeth a few times. Get this county back on track fiscally and, uh, ethically and open, transparent. Work with the constituents. Don't work against them, work with them. Listen. You can book an appointment with me anytime. People are always shocked when they call me from my campaign line and I answer. Of course I do. It's my campaign. Why wouldn't I answer my phone, right?
Right, right.
I am, I'm available anytime to anybody who wants to talk. I love talking to people.
Supposed to be, you know, you're a, you are a representative, you're in, within a representative republic, right? So
Right, exactly.
Be readily available instead of running around with all these security guards and looking like you're somebody's celebrity. That's what I've seen from your opponent and it's just, it's just the worst thing. Um, and let's, let's talk about her a little bit, just a little bit. Um, what would you say is the big, biggest misconception about her? In other words, what are you hearing people say that you're, you're, you think to yourself, that's not true? Like she's not really that or she's not pushing that. Like what's the one thing that stands out to you?
I don't hear a whole lot. The thing I hear the most, and I, I, I'm just repeating this from people I hear it from all the time. Uh, we got to get rid of her. She's not good for the county.
I've heard that two K, like I've heard that.
But basically her, her theory is, I know what you need. Therefore I am going to tax you to give it to you. And I think that's the attitude that she projects. And I disagree with that attitude completely. I don't know what you need.
I'm so glad you said that. And the reason why is because, okay, so this thought came in my mind a little bit ago and I was just thinking about how, you know, a lot of times you have these, these elected officials who feel like being elected means that the people is saying that I think you can make better decisions for me without my input. Like you don't need me anymore. I'm sending you there to go make those decisions. But the problem is when your decisions now impacts my finances, then my input does matter because you need me to pay for it. But to your point, it sounds like she's saying, nope, I got it. Um, you don't, don't, don't worry about anything else. We're going to take your money and we're going to spend it the way we want to spend it.
Exactly, exactly. And that is not what a representative should do. A representative represents your values and opinions, doesn't give them to you, doesn't dictate them to you. They get them from you. So that's, that's what we need to get back to. And all forms of our government, not just local county. We need that in all forms across the board in our government right now.
Absolutely. Okay. As we're coming to a close, I want to talk about one more topic. Um, and then I want to close on us just kind of sharing some of, you know, uh, your closing remarks and what's your, your final message to voters. But let's talk about young voters. Because right now our young people, um, and it's funny because I still consider myself to be a young person, even though I'll be forty this year, but.
You are, trust me, to me, you're very young.
But it, it'll get, you know, what's funny about it is that when I first came into politics, I was the young voter. And so as I am transitioning out of that, it feels very bizarre. But, uh, because there is a group of voters like that are in the twenty-five to thirty range that, you know, that, that has different challenges than I do today. Um, what are you hearing when it comes to them outside of affordable housing? Is there, are there any other concerns that they're having?
Basically, the environment is a big, big trigger for, uh, the millennials and, and that age group, the younger people. They want to be sure and preserve it for their future and for their children's future.
Thank you so much for joining the show. Please remember to like, share, comment and subscribe. And don't forget to hit that notification bell. So you'll be notified every time I upload new content. Now back to the discussion.
There's a lot going on right now in the world. There's a lot of misinformation. There's a lot of good information. But yet we need to grow into being better stewards of our planet, bottom line. I don't know whether going all electric is the answer. A lot of these go green initiatives really aren't very practical. Cause electrical batteries are very hard to dispose of and they're very polluting. And you're also digging lithium out of the earth and winning that whole plot of earth, same as with coal. So I don't know. There's going to be a lot of talk back and forth. I mean, to me, nuclear is clean, efficient way to go. But again, there are some dangers inherent in that also. Uh, but that's the biggest, biggest thing I hear from, from young people is the environment.
Yeah, you know what? So I believe our young people has blown the lid off of big food, you know, and big egg and all that stuff, right?
Yes, yes.
Grateful for them for that because they said, you know, I'm tired of living in this. I mean, I'm, I'm an older millennial, so I was, I grew up on the preservative, you know, the microwave foods and all that stuff. Good cook, but, but for a lot of our generation, we're tired of eating this processed food.
We are. And, and my, my children's generation, they're about the organic, the all natural. Um, they eat so clean and they're so healthy. They've influenced me a lot too. Uh, not to say that I don't still order my fries because they're good. It's, uh, it's, it's great. And they've also turned the spotlight on Big Pharma, which I think is wonderful.
Yes.
We just need to keep a spotlight on everything. We really do.
We do, we do. Yeah, no, that's been great. Okay. So what would you say is your final message to voters? As we are going into election day, um, what would you like them to think about when it's time to vote for your race?
I want people to think about going to vote, actually getting out there. It does make a difference. Too many, too many people say, my vote doesn't count. I'm just one person. Or, oh, it's probably not going to count anyway. Get out there and vote. It's urgent. It's vital. That's what keeps our republic. We need people involved. We need to be, we need people to be unified. We need to just come together and make this country what it was meant to be. And let's, let's just, um, come back together and trust each other a little bit more and listen a lot more.
Yeah. Well, my message to Cobb County voters is to support and vote for Kay Morgan. Um, if you have seen an increase in any of your bills of any level, particularly if it's something that can be impacted by the county commission, you need to go a different direction. It's okay to try something different, try something new. I think this particular election cycle, voters are open to trying something different. They're tired of feeling the pain of poor government. So that's my message to, to your voters, to go and support Kay Morgan. Um, I, I have one hundred percent endorsing her as well. I think that, um, you know, I don't live in Cobb County. I wish I could vote there, but my business is in Cobb County. So I'm very, very, um, in- involved. Um, our business in Marietta, so what whoever is going to be sitting in that seat, we want to make sure that they're caring about small businesses. But you know, before you go, um, what is the message to small business owners? Because, uh, that just popped in my mind. I'm thinking about our business. Uh, what, what, what can small business owners look forward to by supporting you?
For one thing, let's cut the red tape. We need to cut the red tape. And again, we need to keep taxes low on these businesses so they can continue to grow, hire more employees and continue to create wealth in the community. It's very important. Small businesses are the actual backbone of Cobb County. That's, that's the majority of businesses here. We have corporate, of course, we have Coca-Cola, we have Home Depot. We have these wonderful, huge corporations that are located here. But small businesses are the backbone of all communities and we need to be sure that they're thriving.
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much, Kay. Um, as always, I will have the link to your website and everything in the box so that y'all can check that out. If you're listening on the radio, please be sure to go to the YouTube page and see what she looks like for one. She's very beautiful. As well as, um, being able to check out those links. And remember to like, comment, share, subscribe, do all that good stuff while you're there. Um, and hopefully we could talk to you on the other side of the election as Commissioner Chairwoman, uh, Kay Morgan.
I would love to be back. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Kay.